All right, we're good.
All right, the time is six thirty. And with us this evening is City Attorney Chris Hood. Did you say Kim is online?
James.
Kim is online as well. And anyone else?
That's it.
That's it, okay. So Patrick Knight, Rovina Claxton, and Petersville, Lois Mike Ross, Michael Gary. Say your phone, you know, nothing you have to do.
Bob Cummings.
Can introduce yourself later in your, in your super important moment, but. And Craig Schulte with us here today. So that is our roll call. Now it is time for open forum. I will ask, but is anyone here for open forum? Looking around underneath corners and on tables? I'm going to assume not. Um, I understand then moving along that our liquor store project update will come from you, Mike.
That's right, John Havon unavoidable contact asked me to provide his update. I'm happy to do. Please be close to them. Progress is going well. They're currently working on steel stud framing in the interior of the building, which is about seventy-five percent complete. So stop by and take a look. The rooms are defined. Door frames are being installed with wood backing. Temporary windows and doors are ongoing. Mechanical and electrical roughing is ongoing on the interior of the building, about twenty percent complete. The base stone is being installed on the west and south portions of the exterior of the building. And they'll move to the north and east sides next week. They're prepping for asphalt and concrete this week and into next. And the roof has started to be installed, should take about three weeks. Upcoming in the next few weeks, concrete pads and aprons will be installed next week. Asphalt installed the end of next week or the beginning of the week of October twenty-first. Fire sprinkler system starts soon. They're continuing mechanical and electrical roughing for the next few weeks. They'll start drywall in areas where the roofing is complete overhead. And they'll install temporary heat within the next few weeks so they can start finishing in the drywall. And it'll start framing the soffit within the building. So lots of stuff going on. It looks great.
So the asphalt means the whole parking lot?
Yeah, all the exterior side which should be, well, not the landscaping part that'll happen next year, but. The asphalt and concrete will be all done soon.
Wow. Great, thank you. Still kind of amazed about that. After a two-year Highway sixty-one project. Kind of needs to be a project. Yeah, come together and a lot better speed. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions about the minutes or paying the bills?
Do we need to add those bills?
Yes, yep, we need to do that. There's no questions. Would anyone like to make a motion to, to approve the consent agenda along with the additional bills?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Oh, second.
All right, any further questions or concerns, comments on the consent agenda? All right. No in favor for the consent agenda with the additional bills?
Right.
All right. All right, and with that, it passes. Moving along next to our HR update. The HR committee has been meeting monthly with Rovina Claxton. And so we're up to snuff on what's been going on in the work that she and Mike and the rest of the staff have been doing. But we thought this would be a great opportunity for the council to hear what's been going on and the work being done. So, um, Rovina is here tonight. We thought it'd best to come right from her. All right, just the details. And of course, there's time for questions if you'd like. All right, very good.
You can talk with.
Yeah, okay. So earlier this year, the council set goals for Mike, for the city administrator. They included operational type of goals, i.e. the major building project. But also some people-related goals. And there were four of those goals that were set. And since July, the HR committee has been meeting to work on those goals along with Mike, along with me. And so I want to give you an update. There are four goals. I'll give you the status update. Mike, please jump in and add to if I got to mention something. So these are the four goals that were set for Mike for 2024 on the people's side. Again, just the people's side of his goals. So working, and so my role is to work with the city administrator and to assist with these goals. The first goal was to conduct an HR compliance and best practice audit and identify any gaps that are noted. The second thing is to assess the current compensation plan for potential gaps. And I will say that is for strictly for the managers because the contract with ASME dictates the compensation plan for everyone else. So this is just a managerial comp plan. The third goal is to develop a talent assessment tool and to pilot that use with the higher-of-the-wastewater superintendent. And then fourth, to create performance appraisal of two point oh and roll it out. So last year at this time, we were rolling out performance appraisal one point oh, which was to all the managers. It encompassed having them do a self-review of their performance accomplishments for the past year. Having gathering input from the staff, and that was my role to gather input from the staff about the manager's performance of their responsibilities. And then the third was to get Mike's review of each manager. So all that information was consolidated. Mike wrote the final review and helped the manager to set goals for this year for which they would be evaluated at this time to see how they accomplish those goals. So any questions about that? Because you probably remember it all, haven't gotten through it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So, and then, so I'll take each one of them individually. So the first goal, the HR compliance and best practice audit. I gave a standardized tool to the HR committee to go over and to say, if I do this HR audit of all your policies and practices, will this pretty much encompass everything? So it's employment practices, it's hiring practices, it's compliance with state and federal regs. It's record-keeping, personnel policies or personnel files, et cetera. So I started with the employment policies. The current policy handbook in use that is handed out to every new employee when they are hired is dated three twenty-nine ninety-nine. So that is a significantly aged document. So significant changes in federal state laws need to be reflected. And Mike said at that point when we went over this, just pitch it and start over again. But the most pressing need, so that will take some time. And the most important thing is to roll it out to staff, make sure they understand what they're accountable for in terms of employment practices, work rules, et cetera. But the most pressing need is really for a drug testing policy and a testing source. Because you employ CDL drivers, you are required in the state of Minnesota if you, and so you employ CDL drivers and have to comply with DOT regs. In order to do that in the state of Minnesota, well, in order to comply with DOT, you have to drug test. And in order to drug test in the state of Minnesota, you can't do it unless you have policy. The law is very specific on that. So that is probably the most pressing need of all of this right now. But in our county, unfortunately, we do not have good solutions for pre-employment testing. Mike is currently doing random and you have the ability to do a forecause test if you need to do. But we're not doing the pre-employment. And it's hard to find a vendor to do that. Mike thinks that perhaps the current vendor for the other tests will be able to do it, but that, that's the pressing need. Then the second thing I took a look at of probably, probably a total of five or six things on the HR audit form was the personal files and the record-keeping practices. I asked to pull three files, a full-time file, full-time manager file, a part-time employee, and a seasonal employee. Because, because policies can apply differently, certain policies can apply differently. And in all three files that I pulled, I found missing documents. And I call a missing document, if there's a document in there that doesn't have a signature on it, I call it missing because you can't, you couldn't tell an auditor or a compliance officer that that employee received it if it's not been signed. So it just looks like it's put in a file. I found prohibited medical information, information being collected that's prohibited by the Americans with Disabilities Act. And then it's missing, one missing immigration form, that's an I nine form. And then, you know, along with that, in, in looking at records, I think the city needs to decide on, are we going to go paper, are we going to go keep with paper, are we going to go electronic? And then, you know, organize those files properly. So that's the policy and record-keeping practices that I've done thus far. The other audits to be done or else that, things that need follow-up that I've already identified. We need to, I, I need to do a hiring process review. I know that we do some background checking. And I think we need to look at the background checking we're doing for folks that work with youth. I have another city client right now that is reviewing all that because that requires special checks at BCA. If they're working with youth or vulnerable adults in volunteer, in, in programs like the library would do. You don't have a recreation program per se, but you do have people working with youth in library programs. So I think we need to take a look at that. That's a special kind of BCA check for predatory offenders. And then the FMCSA is the acronym for the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. That's a DOT site that is a, they call it a clearinghouse. And since it was implemented in 2020, all employers that have DOT drivers have to register those drivers within the database and do a couple of things. One, they have to check the status of any offenses specifically drug-related in the database before they're hiring CDL drivers. And then they have to do an annual check of the driver's record in the database. So that has at least three years of data because it was employed in 2020. And what that is designed to do is find anybody, let's say a driver had a reasonable suspicion test on a, with an employer. And they lived in Nebraska. And they didn't clean that up, they didn't test, they didn't end up testing negative, they didn't go through all of their programs to get clean and came and applied for a job here. That's the purpose of checking that database to be able to flag it and not hire the individual. And then I think, you know, I happened on to some of the safety programs. And one in particular I happened to look at because we were looking at some other records. And it's a safety program. Mike helped me with this, it's Minnesota Municipal Utilities.
Association.
Okay, association. And they're the vendor that you employ to help you with the safety program, do the safety training, et cetera. You have some templated programs. The one in question was a confined space program because you have confined spaces that some of your employees have to enter, and they are dangerous. There is a NOSHA program. And, and employers should identify what those spaces are and what the mitigation requirements are. Personal protective equipment, you know, air supply, whatever. And so they look like they're templates. You have an MMUA rep, I think he needs to help beyond the templated programs. And let's make sure that they are customized to the needs of the city. And then I think looking at benefit packages, you pay a lot of money for benefits. So are we getting the maximum value in the city in terms of employees' understanding what their benefits are? The value of the, of the benefit and so forth. So those are a couple of areas, three areas actually, that I'd like to do some more research into. Okay, the second goal, this is where the HR committee has been spending quite a bit of time. And so I would say that, you know, we, we are, we agreed, Mike, that we're making somewhere between sixty and seventy-five percent accomplishment thus far on this.
I'd say so.
Yeah. So since July, we have been, the HR committee, well, the mandate from the council, as I understand it is, that you want to move beyond a tenure-based program or a step program. It's modeled after the ASME contract for the managers. Instead of paying for tenure and longevity in the role, pay for performance. Okay, so that's the desired outcome. There's steps to get there, to move from a tenure-based program to merit pay. Some cities are. And, and there's value to that. In the last three months, we have gone through and I have become vastly acquainted with the compensation of various roles in cities across the state. They have a pretty good database that cities have completed. If you complete it for the year, this is an external survey done by Gallagher Associates. They're experts, national experts in compensation. And so the cities complete the data on all of their managerial, well, actually all their jobs, right? Contract and non-contract jobs. And, and then that market data is available for those that participate. So we looked at, we looked carefully at every manager's job in the city. Because again, last year, so last year, we did job descriptions updated for all the roles. So we should have a very clear idea of what the responsibilities are. And you can get good matches if you have good job descriptions. So we looked at all of those matches. We looked particularly, you can cut the data on a variety of ways, but we looked at city size. We looked at scope of duties. We looked at certain characteristics. I'll give you an example. We didn't have a lot of data in the survey for day tier six job. Okay, there were only like three cities, I think, that we had. And so we started cutting them with a little bit bigger-sized population. So I tried to stick to populations of three thousand, three or four thousand or less to have a good match with the city of Grand Marais, right? But then because we didn't have, and the Lee of Minnesota City says that you should have like twelve matches. Well, that's really, that's a stretch. But we certainly should have had more than three. So we expanded it with Mike's help and Tracy's help. We expanded it to some cities that were not really big cities, but had similar kinds of recreation areas. Campgrounds, public rec areas, okay, to get a good match, to see what is their market pay? What are they paying their managers? Because again, what we want to do is two things. We want to reward for merit and performance, but we also want to retain and be able to attract good staff to the city, right? So there's a variety of different intents. Liquor store manager was another one where it's a benchmark job. They have a lot of data in their database for liquor store manager salaries. And so we were able to cut it by, you know, one store and that sales, sales figures as well. So anyway.
The state, the state auditor gives you a lot of data. Yeah. On all the like, you know, municipal liquor stores, that was helpful.
Yeah. So when we go to set the, or to revise the comp program, it's important to recognize that in city government, you have two components to a compensation system. You have an internal evaluation by which you look at the job description and the, and you assign a value. They use point systems that have been around forever and a day. They use point systems in these evaluation tools. The state has one that they, and, and the city has quite a few matches to that state database. But what it does, when you assign points, you are able to set the value of jobs compared to each other in the city. Okay, so it's not looking outside to other markets with similar job, or with the same job title and the same responsibilities. It's what's the value of a job like the city administrator versus the liquor store manager? And you can put them then in a hierarchy and then begin to put pay ranges to the hierarchy of those jobs. So developing and updating the comp program really has to have two pieces. In the state of Minnesota, you have to perform whatever, three years, Mike, the equity report?
Yes, three to five, back and forth.
Yeah. You have to use that internal system of points. Because quite honestly, in private industry and a lot of companies, you don't even see that in use. They'll use that in comp programs, they use the market data, what's the market paying for this job? But the state expects you to turn in a report so that they can look at all their little regression lines. They could do all this mathematical calculation to make sure, the whole point is to make sure you're not paying women less than men. Right? But the internal evaluation tool also needs some updating because it's dated nineteen eighty-eight. So we've got some next steps to do, but that is coming along very well. And we're going to assign some ratings to the performance appraisal two point oh so that managers can begin to get familiar with if we were providing merit instead of across the board saying pay, same pay increase for every, everybody, what might my merit look like based on the performance this year? And my accomplishments. All right, so three, talent assessment tool. This is really, we agreed at the HR committee meeting this morning, this is a much broader one, goal. And it probably really needs to be going into next year. But we said we would try some things with water wastewater superintendent. As Mike would say it, we got lucky and we didn't have to go through major steps. We, you know, we did some job posting, I did reference checking. And so that talent assessment wasn't as important this year. But what this speaks to me is when you say talent assessment and workforce planning, what you want to do is have a methodology for looking at the strategic plan of the city. Where do we need to go over time? What are going to be our needs, our population needs, our service needs, et cetera, our growth needs? What type of talent does that mean we need? And then what you do is you assess the talent that you have. And you say, okay, here are the developmental opportunities. Can they get there to these jobs? Or are there other things that they can do? So it's a much bigger sort of process that I think is pertinent for the future.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's succession planning. We know certain people will be moving on. But then as Rovina just said, where do we sit with existing staff to see who can fill what roles and whatever? Just we, we were mindful in planning. And it also helps with performance goals because if people do have certain things they want to go into, how can we help them do that? As part of their annual goal-setting, whatever. It is all, all this interacts and I think, you know, our whole goal to get to on merit-based compensation for management, a lot of this is pertinent to getting there. We need all these baseline sets and all of that, so.
Okay, and so I've already mentioned performance appraisal two point oh. Last year, we launched the process in October, it wasn't completed until spring. And some of that, you know, is getting used to a brand-new process. I mean, you know, when I went and met with employees and said, now we'd like you to provide input to this person, you don't know, I'm starting to know them now, but we want to get your input about how your manager is doing. You know, there were certain departments, we got a lot of feedback, and other departments, we got zero. And so we, I think, and that's not, that's not really unusual. It often takes multiple times doing this for people to get in the safe zone. You know, Mike didn't come and fire me after I said, you know, some things that my manager needed to do different, you know. Then he didn't come and fire my manager. And the manager didn't fire me. So anyway, we need to launch it. Mike tells me there's a November meeting and you're going to set a hard deadline for January to have them done, all this data collected. And then, of course, that means that the council needs to do Mike's review and be able to establish those goals also in the early part of the year. Because ideally, those goals that are established for Mike are rolling down to each department. Each department manager has some version of at least one of his goals.
So, so yeah, so part of it is that, you know, in the next, well, it's already October, it's probably November, the council needs to have a conversation about what our goals are. And goals aren't necessarily specific things you're going to do. It's where you, you know, some results you want to get. Like last year, we talked about improved communications. That doesn't say exactly what you're going to do to get there, it gives you ideas, whatever. But that's the kind of piece we need to have because then that affects Mike's ability to be successful. And then like you're saying, down to the department heads and some things affect them, you know, it's easy to attach to, some things aren't. But, so we have a role, right? We've always known we had a role to this. And I think deadlines now, they should, we really have to anchor those down. And we talked this morning about January, but I think that doesn't mean January thirty-first. It means early in January, otherwise you're into February. And now people are getting cut short on the months they have to fulfill on their goals before this goes again. But those are some of the fine tuning parts. I would still like to see an annual compensation statement handed to every director as well. Or actually all employees really, a full compensation statement.
With the value of the benefits added.
Yeah, with the benefits that you get. Most people don't recognize or think about how much of their health insurance is covered? How much is being paid for their tax withholdings? And all those pieces need to be recognized for your full compensation. And I think that should also be part of the review process, in real plain English to people, it doesn't hurt to, but yeah. Anyways, sorry.
Well, and just one of the things to also stress about performance appraisal two point oh. When you start marrying up a different way of compensating employees, instead of across the board, everybody gets the same increase based on what the contract employees got. When you make that change, along with that, it will be, the success of making that change to a merit-based pay system is totally dependent on the manager's ability to give good feedback and good coaching. And so being able to understand what Mike's going to do, Mike suggested this this morning. When I have those performance conversations this year with my managers, I need to be able to say now, with that score, because we put scores on the document this year, right, for this year's. And so Mike needs to be able to say to, let's just pick out Chris, let's pick out Patrick because he's sitting there. Patrick, had you been given, were we changed, had we made the change to merit-based pay system based on this year's performance review, what your increase would be based on your scoring and your accomplishments would be X? And being able to articulate that to Patrick so he understands going forward and understands, you know, and again, Patrick needs really, really solid, good measurable goals too, going forward. So that he has every opportunity to make the maximum merit. Or the merit that is, you know, dictated by where he is in the market and his performance. So that's what we're, I think, making progress towards.
Oh yeah, for sure. I don't have one, yeah.
Yeah, and I think this highlights, it circles back, it became obvious to me today, just when you presented in our meeting, that the thing I, I thought we needed to accomplish, this just shows the importance of it. Like the fact that this kind of work is super detailed. It has lots of changes to it going on between federal and state. And of course, the state of Minnesota has been particularly busy this past year with changes that need to be implemented at an HR level. And so we need this. And so we need this, um, first of all, we need to get ourselves levels set on everything, plus introducing our new processes. But then we have to figure out how we're going to maintain that and keep a watchful eye of the changes as they come through and make sure we're current on everything. Because we really probably, you know, we can't afford a full time HR person. But that's where having someone as on on call, who's keeping current on that stuff can make us alert and aware. Of things we need to be changing and keeping updated, so.
Yeah, because all these compliance issues, they all have fines. And DOT has fines and.
Doing things on these lines.
Oh, yeah. They're a good resource, yeah.
Yeah.
I I Tracy's in touch with them, I've been in touch with them.
Yeah. I mean, it's it's a one way thing, you still have to have someone who's out there, you know, it's there a lot of it. But who is there looking at it and digesting it and watching it all the time or, you know. Uh, there was the, is it just called family leave? They brought in someone, was it Monday?
Oh, to family medical leave.
Yeah, to 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 poor businesses here locally to learn about that, but then you have to take that stuff to be there to do that, so. Yeah, there's always information.
Yeah, that's not till twenty twenty six, but it will be big, it will be a big change. Yeah. Alright, so any other questions? Good, you're good, Greg.
You could have missed on some of the great bill, some of these changes. Alright, you have more questions than whatever.
Thank you.
I do feel we've gotten a lot down like Ben just said.
Yeah, because if you think about, we just started meeting really in July.
That's correct. Especially assessing the getting assessing where pays are for the department heads, that was a bit of work to kind of get a feel for that.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm excited to see it move from this, from the intangible to like now we have a scoring system and now we're. You can see what that impact is for employees and 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 I think that's really going to be. A good, a good moment, like that and of course, the personnel policy would need to be updated and like, there's a lot of work to be done and I mean, I think we all knew that. Mike's goals this year were incredibly ambitious to begin with, but to see him actually getting like really hammered down and it's it's cool. It's it's worked good.
Yeah, progress. Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to take off then.
Alright.
Well, and you can, but you know, plus we had some different events around too, you know, staffing stuff, they're pretty big and it was my style or extra help. So, um, yeah. Alright, now it's time for our annual insurance call.
Thanks for inviting me, thought I would uh show up in person so we can put a face with all the. Stuff that's going on here and correspondence. Um, my name is Bob Cummings, I'm the manager of security state insurance, we have a local branch office here in Cranmeray. And I'm just here to kind of um maybe just go through uh this quote summary and hit some highlights. Answer some questions, uh it's quite an extensive coverage package. And can get quite detailed, but um I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I think you all received a quote comparison sheet. I saw in the package and amazingly, um, the numbers are very similar to what they were last year. I know the rates overall have not gone up hardly at all, I think they were thinking about a one percent or. Less than one percent increase overall for most accounts, um, the property is a little bit uh. Um, deceiving because we did remove the city hall and the liquor store and that location from the property. Coverage, so there was quite a bit of a limit there, property coverage that was removed. Uh, on the flip side, we did extend some coverage down to the uh new liquor store location. There are some renovations that we're ensuring, there's a storage container. There's uh about three hundred thousand dollars in inventory that we extended down there, along with liability and uh those things, so. I'm guessing that um that property uh limit and uh premium is probably going to change um with the new. Um, building and um there are some other things coming down uh. But by also because um. Uh, they they hire each company by the HSA to do property valuations and those valuations have been completed. And they've assured me that we're going to get those um appraisals here soon. So I'm not sure if they're going to insist that we adjust those values right away, but. Um, they're going to eventually want us to adjust the values and and um. The property values have been increasing significantly over the last couple of years. This HCA comes out and does appraisals once every seven years, so. Um, we're we're going to get caught up and and I hope that uh it's um. It's reasonable um the premiums and the limits, so something we're going to have to to address here in the near future. Um, just going down the list, this mobile property, uh that's a a little bit cheaper and it's based on the property rates and the limits, so. Um, that's uh that's your um mobile equipment loaders, uh uh street cleaners. Um, just equipment that you take out away from the buildings, anything mobile and that limit uh is uh. Up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, kind of a blanket limit, so. We don't have to schedule, I don't think we have any property scheduled that's a limit over that. Um, first uh party cyber, that's a a coverage that's afforded there and that's included automatically. Uh, it's up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh per um claimant. With a max limit of ten million dollars, so if uh we somehow lost someone's private information in the city uh that. We have covered for that. Municipal liability, um, that's all of our liabilities um as a municipality. And that's typically based on expenditures and uh every year um. Uh, Kim and I kind of go through this renewal application, she provides a lot of this information. And uh as you can see in the footnote below that the expenditures are a little bit. It looks like the household uh uh are up uh considerably, so.
Yeah, that number doesn't.
That must be.
Yeah, that's right, I had that one highlighted, like really, where are all those?
We've solved the housing crisis.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that that seven ninety five was an old number and that we're getting caught up, no, seven ninety five was right, okay. Thirteen seventy five is probably more than.
Oh, yes, Kim?
I get that number from the assessor's office. And they didn't break it down between households versus apartments or vacation rentals. That thirteen seventy five was the number they gave me.
Well, so then on that vein, a little while ago, when I was asking them for data of households in the city, they gave me just a little over eight hundred. Household. So that means my maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I can certainly check on that and see if we can get that adjusted. Um, then they talk about sewer increases, so that would be probably consistent with what's going on with the households, you know? Um, uh, the auto liability, that's kind of kind of flat also, I mean, it's up a little bit, but uh. Uh, the numbers uh um haven't changed, um, we have a rating factor. Um. An experience modification which is point nine five, so our experience has been good with that. I just think that the rates probably are up a little bit. Physical damage uh um on these autos is not, not a lot of premium, uh it's up twenty two percent, but only about three hundred dollars and we did add. A new ladder truck and uh and we had physical damage uh to a two thousand thirteen, I think, fire truck. Um, so that's probably the reason for some of that adjustment. Um, liquor liability is down, I think our receipts are down a little bit, right, Kim? I think a little bit from last year. Um, yeah. Anyway, and then that would reflect.
Yeah.
Decreased revenue. And that's based on receipts, so um we have provided the onset receipts at the golf course, so that's, that's been done. We also made the adjustments, we had to list a new location for the liquor off sale. Um, so I think there's been license, a new license issued for that location and then we did make the adjustment on the policy, endorse the policy. So that's consistent with your license. And this year we did not uh, we did not buy the um, the insurance for the fireworks, uh I think it's determined that. The Lions Club is the one and all we do is provide like a means to buy the fireworks, we don't sponsor the fireworks. So that was a savings of about five hundred dollars for, I think, two events, firework events. Um, but in general, I, and if we were to go to this uh renewal premium summary. So I've uh actually requested the policy to be issued. Um, and these are the final numbers. Um, we did um. I I wanted to get the ID cards, the auto ID cards and and we did get the policy issued, so that's been issued and and there is an invoice and we did. Elect not to waive the tort liability limits, so. Um, we are going to um that municipal limit of five hundred thousand dollars per claim. Um, if you go to the back page just real quickly, um, we did quote uh some equipment breakdown and. And uh Kim was looking for numbers on that and we did uh get a quote. For the equipment breakdown, part of the question was the um, the power plant. And you can get equipment breakdown for that po- power plant. Um, but it is fairly expensive. Um, we got a quote last year and I I do have those numbers from last year and. And it does take kind of an extensive application process to get those numbers. Um, but this year we did not quote it, I I um looked at last year's numbers and. Uh, let's see. Last year they quoted the equipment breakdown of the power plant with a hundred thousand dollar deductible at forty four thousand eight hundred forty eight dollars a year. So very expensive. Um, and uh they do not pay for a lo- the loss of revenue. So um, that was a concern, you know, and and they do not cover loss of revenue, so.
They didn't cover a lot of the typical causes of breakdown too.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't for the price, it didn't, it it wasn't a good policy.
No, and with the with the amount we operate that plant, I don't think it's worth the investment, it was just the risk is low enough that we can self insure it.
Yeah.
Happened so far, yeah.
And even the other part, you know, they will uh, this quote we got this year for the equipment breakdown. Other than the power plant was twenty five hundred dollars and that's with a twenty thousand dollar deductible. Uh, that's going to cover a lot of your lip pumps, a lot of your water treatment pumps, uh I'm thinking a lot of maybe some transformers and those kinds of things. But with that high deductible, it it almost seems like it uh it would take quite a loss to um. Even your phone systems and these kinds of things, they quite a lot to even get into that coverage. And um, I'm not trying to talk you out of it, but I'm just, I'm just telling you what what uh is involved in that that pricing, so. Um, we didn't buy that last year either. Um, the other part we also quoted last year was an excess liability limit and you quoted a million dollars of uh excess liability. So right now, um. Um, we have, for example, a million dollars of liquor liability coverage. And that excess liability would be an excess liquor limit as well, so it'd actually double that limit to two million dollars. Um, the municipal liability um would also be um. Would also be uh increased that million dollars and uh. That uh that would be in excess of your tort liability and anything that would be um. Excess of your of your limit, your limits. Now, the tort liability does not cover uh like a civil liability, so um if there was like a. Wrongful termination or any type of civil or civil commotion. Um, any type of a a police law enforcement type uh suit or something like that. I know you you don't have a uh have a police force, but um. Those are uh civil type suits and that's what that liability is for. Um, and that's what the excess liability would provide, that was seven, a little over seven thousand dollars for that million dollars of excess liability. You're still protected under that tort liability for auto, like auto claims, um injuries around town, uh if you're sued because of a uh. Some kind of a city uh ordinance, kind of someone to be injured or something like that. Auto claims probably most likely uh type of suit you're going to find with the fire department and and uh public vehicles. To get back to that uh, the renewal premium summary. Uh, just to highlight a couple of things, um. This uh, the crime is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that. Crime coverage is for uh theft of money, uh money and securities. Um, it covers uh money that would be uh generated or laying around at the liquor store or not taken care of properly at the liquor store. I don't know if you ever have that kind of money laying around, but I'm not, you know? But it also covers stuff from employees as well. So um, that along with the bond covers employees for mishandling the funds or stealing funds and those kinds of things. Um, does the relief, does the fire department have a re- a relief association? You know, and so the fire department and the relief association manager would also be covered under the bond. And uh, I know they are required to be bonded. Uh, they're going to be handling relief association funds and some of their fundraising activities as well, um, pull tabs, I don't know if they do pull tabs.
They don't have a lot of financial activity since the retirement has been handed over to the state.
Oh, yeah, so they, so Para takes care of the retirement.
Yeah, and that's where the real money was with the relief association.
Yes.
This is, yeah, they also don't have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars tax.
Okay, okay. Well, they kind of set those limits just based on the city size and um, as you can see, the price isn't isn't terrible, um, it's uh the. The crime coverage is actually included, the bond is is uh three hundred thousand a limit that we do request, so. Um. The federal funded protects the city if they are incur costs of. Digging up an old uh fuel tank or something that's leaking, those kinds of things. Um, defense cost reimbursement is, covers the city council members, reimburses the city council members if they if they're sued for. Um, uh. Uh, the uh meeting, uh.
Open meeting?
Open meeting laws and those kinds of things. Open meeting laws and those kinds of things. So uh, that's what that is for. Um, I, I, like I said, I'm guessing that we're gonna have to make some adjustments on the property, but they promised me once the policy is issued, they're gonna be sending out that uh, the report and they get pretty, pretty detailed into uh the structures and the appraisals of the different various buildings around town. So I don't know. Do you recall meeting with them recently? Think they were out earlier this summer, not sure. Don't recall HSA coming through.
Yeah.
And so when you say property, real property or just all the building, you know, the content, you know?
Yeah, building and, and contents.
Just knowing that property values in general downtown higher due to recent sale activity, they just wanna make sure.
Right. No, this is a replacement value that they work on. So the appraisals uh based on cost of rebuilding structures and it's a, it's a very nice um tool to have, you know? And the, the appraisals are good. Um, there was a letter and you saw the letter going out about the power plant. And I believe that's part of those appraisals. So they're saying that our limits on the power plant are not high enough. I think we have a little over six million dollars scheduled and they're saying that the, it could be as high as ten million. Um, on that power plant. So are there any questions on the, the quotes or the numbers of charges? I don't have any. Um, you know, we got a twenty thousand dollar deductible to board. So um we did remove coverage from some of the older vehicles just because they aren't even worth thirty thousand, quite a few of them. There are several vehicles that we still have replacement costs. Uh, it's not, they don't call it replacements, enhanced coverage on. So you get up to two hundred percent of that, of the value to replace some of these newer fire trucks that we have. So there is some enhanced coverage on, on several of the vehicles, but a lot of the vehicles are just liability only. Just because if we, they're, they don't have a twenty percent of the value.
So I guess for me, it's still going back to the, the new building. Um, so does that mean the potential of a a, a quite a significant change to that premium? Or no? Not portion of the premium?
Yeah, that, that portion of the premium is, is a majority of the premium. Uh, we have a lot of property value. I'm guessing the new building with the sprinkler system and all that, you're gonna get very good rates on that building. A lot of the more expansive type metal roof type buildings like your shop up there and some of the larger, those rates are quite high. Because of the hail exposure and some of the wind, hail and wind exposures. But I'm the, I'm guessing that your rate on that new building uh is gonna be fairly low, I'm guessing around like a tenth of what it is on some of the other buildings. So you, you're, I think we have about six, about a six million dollar project that we're sold on the, the value on that building. Or is that?
I have a project eight and a half, but I doubt that's what the building.
So, um. And it depends, uh I don't have my calculator updated, but maybe if I can give you some idea.
So does that mean with the green roof, we don't have to worry about hail? We get a lot of hail here, but.
Our left. Yeah.
So you can get about six million dollar bill, six thousand dollars in premium. Um. So.
Which would be in addition to this wind.
Yeah, and it's pro. So it's you're not gonna get a big bill right off. It's January, you're probably looking at about seven, eight months of premium. Um, but my concern is these are, these appraisals that are coming in, you know, um, because um we don't, we don't adjust the values um right here on our schedule. Um, the appraisals come in and then, and with the, with the um new appraisals, if they may ask us to bump these values up, and we might be surprised at some of the values that we have compared to what we have scheduled. The league uh property coverage is very comprehensive when it comes to that and makes adjustments for um being underinsured and not having enough insurance and they're gonna pay for that replacement value. Um, there may be a penalty if we're way underinsured, but um, the, the property form itself is very comprehensive, but when they adjust those, when they want to adjust the values, they're gonna, they're gonna be wanting us to bring them all up. So I'm just trying to forewarn you that that could be an issue. Um, in general, the, the liability and the rest of the premiums are, are gonna, gonna remain fairly flat. It's just the values that we need to deal with on that. Um, there were some questions on the cannabis and, and uh, there's been a lot of discussion about that uh with the league, but uh, like I said earlier, that the cannabis sales are, are gonna be covered uh under our liquor liability policy and uh for the um low potency cannabis. But not covered uh for the uh regular high potency um products. So I'm not sure where the league is going with that. I don't know if they know where they're going with that, but uh the um uh, the issues out there, I, I'm not sure what kind of markets we're gonna have for high potency cannabis. Right now it's not covered. So I, I saw that on your agenda.
You mean if you decided to do a municipal, you know, dispensary?
Yeah, sure. It's not in, it's not in the works.
No.
Okay. There's other cities that are, that are, are contemplating that, you know?
I'm sure there will be a few.
Yeah.
We did a little bit.
Yeah.
Still might. It's just not in.
Right, right. Um. Yeah, I, I, I don't have much else to say unless you have some questions. Um, but uh, the league is still like a good resource for a lot of your um, you know, insurance needs and even we were talking about HR. They're a good resource for HR. Um, and employment practices liability, that's an issue for HR too, and that's on your workers' comp end. You know, we don't we don't, um, you're an agent record for your workers' comp. I think you just do that in-house here. Uh, but uh they, they provide an employment practices liability. That uh is a pretty key um, um coverage for your workers' company, employer, employment practices need. So uh, one other thing I wanted to bring up is no false sewer. Uh, it's not covered uh for a sewer. And I, I a lot of the smaller cities don't have that kind of coverage, um, just because of the older sewer systems and and they don't qualify for those coverages. But if you are doing um a new waste treatment uh um system and maybe doing some different lift stations, lift pumps and doing what you need to do to get that updated, you can apply and they will come and inspect maybe off coverage. Now, what that is, is it provides uh coverage for those basements that get uh backed up with sewer. And uh, and, and uh I don't know if you've had that problem up here.
Yeah, absolutely. The insurance did write us a check.
Did they?
Oh, yeah.
Um, this is a more of a no fault. So it's like uh they pay uh uh, whether it's your fault or not, the city's fault or not, it just happened and, and it's an issue if you had you know, many people um fighting against the city for their sewer problems.
Does that share that same deductible, Bob?
You know, I would have to check. Uh sometimes they, the no fault, if it doesn't, doesn't have a deductible, they're just gonna pay it. But right now we don't have it. So some of them might wanna consider in the future. We're gonna do some upgrades on the city sewer system. I'm uh I'm not sure if the city wants to uh explore anymore of this extra covers, the excess liability. Um. I mean, that excess liability was, I, is a coverage I normally recommend. Just because we do have these exposures with the liquor store and the on sale liquor. Liquor liability claims is not a tort liability claim. It's a more civil liability claim. And uh, it's not covered. It's not, you're not protected under that tort law, municipal law for the liquor sales. So you're kind of uh hanging out there a little bit uh with a million dollar limit on that, on the liquor sales.
The off sale.
The off sale and the on sale.
The way we don't do on sale.
The golf course.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
Forgot.
And I mean, yeah, I mean, and T H, the two leg, but yeah, golf course and liquor. I mean, I think somebody, didn't they expire in Newton? This year from, yeah.
You mean a golf course?
Yeah.
That was a golf course. Yeah. Oh, that's what they were busy doing. Yeah, I thought, yeah, you're right. I heard it's how it came from.
Bad deal.
Yeah.
That liquor and, and if you had a uh, um police department, that's another exposure. Um, you know, um, is police brutality and claims and, and suits, those kinds of things are an issue for some of these other municipalities. That's where that extra million dollars of limit is, is important. Um, I don't know if um there's other civil suits that are potential, but not really. Um. Uh, but the liquor is, is it's kind of expensive on that. Um, but just wanted to bring it up. To know that's, love that. Access liability is poor.
What is our contract with the county for law enforcement? How does that fit into that? Is that fall under some of their insurance coverages then?
Yeah, their, their employees are covered by their insurance.
Okay. So it's, it's addressed that particular one is addressed through that.
Yeah, you could think if uh county was fisherman's picnic and there was a ruckus. And uh for soon for police brutality or something like that, potentially the city could be involved. Because they are providing the, the um, police protection here. But um, most likely you're gonna not run into limits problems, especially if you're contracting that. I mean, I'm not an attorney or anything, but I'm just trying to look at some of the stuff a little bit realistically.
Well, it's true. Sometimes losses, they're everyone, you know, everyone in the plan. They'll find money, but it's the same. Okay. And our, and our maybe anything can happen at the golf course, but at this point we just sell some beer and remind them. Just beer.
Yeah, the sales are pretty, pretty minimal there.
It's not a big game on strike.
Um, as far as the league goes, they are expecting another dividend this year. So um, I think the things are going good. Uh, last few years have been kind of rough uh with hail and wind claims. Not necessarily up here, but um in other parts of the state, and this is kind of a it is a cooperative. So um we do um sometimes pay for um losses in other areas, but expecting that dividend again this year. And that's kind of a nice um, nice thing to get some of your money back.
Anything else that we are thinking to ask about, the changes that you noticed, Mike?
No. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I will um let you know when we get those appraisals in. Council wants us to get, get, wants me to come up and review those. We can take, take a look at those appraisals and look at making some adjustments. Um, I'll see if the, the league is gonna ask of us on that. Um, but everything else should be good to go. Um, I do have ID cards. I'll pack it here for Kim and, and um you can uh get that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Yeah, there you go.
Look at that. It's in October. Thank you. All right, on to the cannabis ordinance. Um. Mike and Michael.
Yes.
And all, and I have all been attending. I haven't attended all of them, but the various meetings with the county around development of all things related to cannabis for some time. And the O M C put together a model ordinance, which is no it's what stated in the packet, but that's what the county did. And then after some conversation about the fact that it's kind of a crap shoot um about access to a license, and this is mostly with a focus on the retail licenses. Um, there was talk about how many should we actually allow simply because of the two years out before they relook at this, the state relooks at this whole licensing process. And it, there's no guarantee that in this lottery system, anyone within this county will be drawn. And there's no rules as to being where you are located. In fact, you can be out of state and out of country um, when you apply for a license. So the county took the angle to lower the number available with that in mind of hopefully preserving something for if our intent is to help a, a local retail. And I don't think we put a lot of emphasis on like growers or other types of licenses assuming, which may not be totally a good idea. I don't know. Somebody could decide they still thought it was profitable to grow uh to be, but you still have, yeah, there's a lot more to distribute there. But anyway, so the county ordinance is sitting there. I had a few few things. Do, do people have some questions right off the top? On this?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much for you, it's like we've been working on a long. In terms of a lot of the things they adopted, although I'm glad that. The enforcement rules and my company's and power penalties.
Penalties, yeah.
But also um.
Um. Right now that it reads uh, with one license for the city. Um. And of course, if, if at any point in time a municipal was created, that would not be part of that.
Right.
That rule, it's always outside of that, it doesn't satisfy that rule, um. I just made a few. Notes, um.
Well, I mean, you know, as we're looking at this, one of the things. Having one retail city, and I see that the county is saying that, I think that. Um, I wanna make sure like we can still retain our own ability to increase. We. It's like they can, I mean, they're gonna say that. That's fine.
And this ordinance was written with the idea that it could be also used by the city, but it doesn't have to be. If we do pass one ordinance, it actually don't have to be to limit the number in the city. So that if local government decides to become part of this registration. And sets the number for their own jurisdiction, then the county can't do that. But we decide, we don't want to be regulating this, and what can they do, they can do it. So, let's just say, for instance, that is the decision I go with, and you wanted this number to be different. Then you could ask the county board to change it, and I'm sure they would.
Yeah, right now, we have total control over that number, but in, and we still it in the future. It's just an added layer to get it changed, you know, as opposed to just, we're gonna mean it or mean it.
Say five years from now, you wanted it to be six instead of one. And you asked the county to do that, and they decided they didn't want to, then you could still just pass your own ordinance that regulates this, make your own number.
Okay, and if we, we did do that, would we have to take on the whole, we would have to take on the whole burden? Licensing and all kinds of stuff.
Well, it's, it's not, I mean, the states actually. Doing the licensing. Just registering the licenses and again, doing the inspections and enforcing the, the sales rules locally. Because we've got currently a, a contract with the sheriff's office to provide law enforcement services. Whether or not we have an ordinance, they're still probably going to be the ones doing that.
Yeah.
Uh, but they also are other staff members in the county that are gonna be involved in the inspections and other things.
Well, and that's the part I think, you know, I was reading through, there really aren't inspections, it's a compliance. Inspections are done by the state, no matter what, they're coming up to do onsite inspections, so that isn't a responsibility of anyone. We have to simply say if they're in compliance for zoning pieces. Um, the once a year minimum compliance check. Is the age thing like cigarettes and, you know, sales type thing. Right now, they're proposing that public health and human services is actually going to do it, not the sheriff's office. Which is a choice, you can go either direction on that.
I would expect them to not just look at age verification, but also look at the other rules that they include in that.
Yeah, cuz I think they were talking about display and all that chat.
Product in the right place.
Yeah.
Splayed appropriately, society is appropriate, all those things, yeah.
But I don't know if that's their responsibility to do. That's the part I'm unclear of, and I, I noted that in there on page twenty, they added that, the model doesn't have that in there.
The, the model, um, I think it was just subject matters you can cover optionally locally, that, those rules are optional local.
Well, they're down farther, but I mean, they basically say, you know, the, the compliance check, and then they just put in this. And compliance with this ordinance, which like.
They have the authority to do that.
Well, they do, but I mean.
And the state.
The compliance required.
Compliance with local ordinances.
They will, I mean, that's part of, like, you can, and it's in here, you could put in a complaint, they have to answer it in thirty days, the state.
Of our own ordinances, is that?
Of, of all of it, yeah, if there are any problems or complaints that the county discovered, or the city, or whoever, right? You file with, with part of what, and it's listed in here in actions that. That the auditor would do, cuz they're in charge of. Applying this ordinance, but then there's thirty days, it has to be checked out and verified and a response given. Um, to that, I just don't want this to become bigger than it needs to be of what we're required versus what this. Cuz the state's offering to do a lot of this work. Which they should.
Yeah.
Should, since they're the one doing the actual license, so I just.
Yeah.
Felt a little uncomfortable, said just compliance was like, okay, what, you know, what, what are the things are you thinking?
I guess I'm just a little, and like, were you saying, I, I just wanna understand, so if, if we're, we make a rule. Counting through, yeah, and then we say state you enforce it, I don't believe it.
No, they keep.
The state.
They're, they're, yeah, yeah, okay, good.
And we're limiting. No, and the state's pretty much dictated what we can and can't do anyway, you know what I mean, yeah, and that flip side. But like, one of them is down on page twenty-one, where it says a history of compliance. It's like, that's, um. I'll double check this, cuz I pulled out their latest version again. Yeah, I mean, that's their thing, by way of a renewal application. The, the applicant shall consent to the release of, of the county's, of the O M C's historical compliance records. Well, I don't know if we have that, really, that option to sit there and make each judgment calls, you know. I'm unclear, cuz that's.
I don't think anybody knows for sure yet, yeah.
But I'm.
I'm, I'm, I like that they are setting that boundary for themselves, but if you don't want to.
Well, I don't know if they really can, I mean. They aren't giving us a lot of options when it comes time to do renewals about what we can really say. So I'm wondering like, okay, why is this in here? Cuz there's very little estate allows you to control. You know, it's like if your zoning's in, your taxes are paid, all that, like, yeah, we don't have a whole lot to say. So that one was kind of an odd, I mean, I don't know where they're going with that.
Um, but it's just, aren't they just, they're asking, they're gonna renew somebody's license, they just want verification. But they're from the state, that they've been following the state's rules.
Yeah.
But that's built in.
Or they haven't been. Fine for something or something that they didn't do, and then it doesn't get caught by us and we renew their license.
Well, we don't.
And they're not running a very good business.
We don't renew their license, the state does, and they're keeping track of this, all they're gonna do is. The state's just gonna come back to us and ask for the really basic stuff, so. There's no, like, we can't, I don't know why we want their history, cuz we aren't, I mean. Obviously, if we want it, we should all look at this public information, but I mean, we aren't the ones making that decision, the state should be looking at their history and deciding. If it's okay or not, that, that's why I'm not really clear why, why they take it upon themselves.
Okay, so what you're saying is.
The state should.
They have a license available. City. And the only person really checking on that. Is the state.
Other than our compliance checks.
Compliance checks.
And of course, we wanna make sure they're still within zoning, but if they're in their same location, in theory, their zoning's okay.
Who contacted the state or. Whatever.
Right, we became.
Practices that aren't up to state standards.
It's, it's the same process that we use for alcohol.
Would be, we'd be, we'd be notified.
Where we're doing background checks through law enforcement on applicants and renewals.
Right. To the state, city finds out about it.
That's right.
Right, so when they come in for renewal.
I can see the similar process at work with the language, the, the statutory authority is not the same, and that's the point I think you're trying to make, Racy.
Right, I see.
I'm, yeah, I guess I'm just sort of wondering after going through all those meetings, if the county is trying to take a bigger role or responsibility to this. Than we really need to or, or have the ability to do, since it sounds like the state is. Going to put together, I mean, it'll be just uh, an online deal, and if you look. Actual registration form that they want you to fill out is super basic. And it's all gonna be done online anyways, they're gonna send a notice out to us that someone's applied for a license. We're gonna answer those simple questions, it's gonna go right back.
What's the.
Not a hard.
So the renewal application is how many, is that every year? What is that?
Yeah.
It's an annual thing. I mean, I guess. Okay.
Well, it affects us though, and, and maybe we don't want all that X, no. You know, we're only looking at one license for the city right now.
Yeah.
To do this, oh, the other thing, I, I'm really bad about space, so if you get down to page twenty-three, I don't know what. I'm looking on my. Yeah, so gee, I mean, we've talked about this, yes, that's right, by a bunch of businesses.
Yeah.
And what's a thousand feet, I don't know.
Up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a thousand.
Okay, so let's see. Somebody in front of like, listen, listens, Leschinsky's land there, let's say. In theory, somebody is allowed to put a little store up there, is that a thousand feet?
Yeah, probably.
It is within a thousand, a thousand feet. Or just up the road, there is property for rent. The old appliance store, is that within a thousand feet?
No, that's.
Okay, I'm just saying.
The distance from, let's just say, uh, the intersection itself of Big Dunk, okay, sixty-one. To. Building. Of the school building. Is five hundred and twenty-three feet. So a thousand feet gets us to. The yards. A sister's place.
Well, a thousand feet is three, is.
So, the. Jean's Foods would not be allowed to sell sister's place. And then a thousand feet the other direction. The Palmer Rentals property is inside of a thousand feet, their partners that they have.
Um. Is after. The um. The old plumbing, the plumbing piece, right?
Well, you're talking about, um, yeah, that's Amex Plumbing.
Yes, I'm sorry, I should've just said that.
That's within a thousand, that's within.
I'd like to know what people think, I mean.
Yeah, it's been raised around these buildings and.
I mean, that's.
I mean, here we are in our prime business district, and unfortunately, no one told the school they shouldn't build, really. Because who would know, but I mean, what do you guys think?
I mean, we could go with the. Yes, and that's one of the things I was, wanted to talk about too, is the zoning, obviously, not including the zoning.
Not necessary either to say those things, like, whether or not we would list the zones that it's allowed in this ordinance. It's already listed in our zoning ordinance.
Right, so they're just, yeah, you were mentioning that before, like, even if there's gonna set up a retail shop, but there's only certain places you can have.
Or, our zoning doesn't, yeah, this type of use would be allowed anywhere where we allow retail. So, the. All the highway sixty-one zoning areas, all the downtown zoning areas.
So.
Next use. Sixty-six, yeah. So, I don't think so.
Well. I'm not sure. If you can't have retail?
Just check.
Okay.
So that same concept apply farther, well, first, the first question is down on page, and then page down. Which we, no, I know we've talked about, like, you know, within an attraction of a public park or public space that minors use. I, my first question was, does the library fit under that definition, because we do see a lot of. Down there.
I feel like there. I don't feel like the definition was. I thought it was more specific than that, and didn't include anything that was near the downtown area. But. Maybe it is great.
Well, it just simply says within five hundred feet of an attraction within a public park, that's right, you know, it's just like, it's gonna stretch, I just wanna make.
Yeah.
Sure.
And I thought.
In the city, public park, Harbor Park, Boulder Park. Um, the Red Park. Those are the parks that we designate in the city, and the only place that has something that I think meets this definition is the playground. Maybe you could say the ball field in the Red Park too.
Mm-hmm.
But either way, you're, you're not hitting anywhere.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, cuz. Do we consider those grounds in front of the library of, of park?
No.
Okay, so, all right. Let me just clarify on that.
Retail, yes, and mixed use.
So what you're saying is, this model ordinance says a thousand or whatever feet of a school.
Yeah.
But our zone, the city zoning would say differently, so.
Now, the, the zoning would allow it, but this buffer would not allow it, so if you're checking zoning. You also have to check this minimum buffer requirement when you ask for the registration question. So if somebody came in and wanted to place it within a thousand feet, which we do, yes, it's just one of the things we'd look at.
And we don't have to care about the use center, which we did have to care about with cigarettes.
Yes, we don't, it clearly doesn't have a buffer zone with these rules.
So, how does? That, they want a thousand feet. To get around the school thing, we're considering five hundred, I think, are we? Or are we?
I mean, I think we're not, that's only a hundred. We're not sacrificing that much in terms of. People could do it.
Well, I, we're certainly not taking away the ability to provide one license. And if somebody came in and said, I really wanna go in here, they could make it.
I don't wanna, I don't know, that's where then this should be a city ordinance.
We have to have even one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Well, we have to, well, we have to, we have to have anywhere. I think that'd be a fine idea.
No, we have to have one in the county, is that what you mean?
We're required to allow, allow at least one.
In the population, yeah.
That would be plenty enough.
Okay, then back this up, does the council want to have a licensed retailer in the city? I can get this one, you're all assuming did. Or limits?
I don't think you can set it at zero, even with the county taking this, I don't think they could write in their ordinance, you cannot have them in the city.
Why not?
I don't think that.
I think the county could write it. I, I think.
Well, it's by population and the county is as far as you have, I mean, I, I don't want zero, but I just mean, I, I don't think.
I, I mean, I don't think we should just say zero. Was, do three of you want me to go ask that question?
I think it's already answered, one, one by the county, and you, you, you're okay, but. I don't know, is there somebody that else says I don't want any, is, I'm making, you know, I've been seeing, I'm making assumption we did, so I don't know. I don't know, is there somebody that else says I don't want any, is I'm making, you know, I've been seeing, I'm making assumption we did, so I don't know, better clarify that.
I don't. Yeah, expand it with that. But like, I mean, I think that's why we sent it to to one is so that we can see what, what are we talking about here? We don't know, nobody.
Yeah, so we can, also to help future potential retailers once they figure out their license numbers. Cause right now they're not even, yeah, they haven't even figured out how to guarantee you can meet that in a county.
Yeah.
To me, that's one argument to 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 support what Billy is saying, it's like, well, jeez, until this unfolds and you don't, you mean, you don't even know who these licensed. People are gonna be, right, like, we don't have any control over that. Whereas flashboarding or two, three, whatever, maybe things just. Change or I don't know, but.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, I I mean, I guess.
I'd like normal controls over that sort of thing, right, I just like some of that normal like.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? Do this business and here, you know, help me figure out where to put it.
That we can't have any control over who gets the license.
Right.
That's why. I don't know, but.
Cause that wasn't the intent, the intent, I don't think was. To help local business and then all of a sudden it's like, okay, it'll be local business, but it could be somebody from.
That's right, Texas that got the permit. And everything that we talk about in our comprehensive plan, et cetera, is about helping local business, right, and trying to trying to facilitate that.
Well, I don't know that we define local business though, as owned by someone who lives here.
Well, that's that's true, but we also in in the past gone through lengthy steps to avoid. Not, you know, outside companies coming in and and putting up. You know. Whatever, so, right, so.
So Mike, but but you're under the impression that that's not.
I wouldn't assume it is, I think based on all the conversations, if there was a way. Or for a political subdivision to hit zero, somebody would've come up with it.
Yeah, cause I swear, this has already come through.
Yeah, I mean, the. It's not each city within. Yeah, it's county by county.
Registered. So we can't have an ordinance if we want, if we want the county to be the one that says.
Oh, I see what you mean, you just mean if we had our own ordinance, could we say zero?
Would the county even say zero in their ordinance if you asked them to? Are they even allowed to? I think those are both questions worth exploring. You really want to go there.
So another question would be like, if we said zero, when the company said we're gonna have one, can they put it in the city?
Yeah.
No, they've already said seven, right? Yeah.
They they've already established that they think we should have one.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, which was based on conversations where you would participate. Yeah, we participated in that, for sure, it'd be true, it's not like they're, I mean.
Right, they didn't do this on their own, in fact, it was.
Yeah, it doesn't say two, it says one in each of these different geographic areas.
See, it used to be fourteen, till I told everyone, look, this lottery means we're not gonna get necessarily get licensed.
Well, I think it'd be in six others, six others, okay. It's the way I read it.
And of course, Graham Portage is on their own, really, they do whatever.
I'm still not sure that the way the county has written those regions is, it complies with the state statute that we have the ability to do that. It might, but I don't know.
You think it's just subdivided by county, period, like that's it? Like, you can't just say each of these townships has.
Well, maybe you can, right, but I don't think the statute is clear about that, and I think the intent. Yeah, the the statute is definitely not clear. Cause they only talk about counties, and then they talk about municipalities.
But that's always about the number of populations, the population number.
They they don't want, the intent was not to have, I like to say, any dry counties.
Exactly.
So you can't have zero in a county, but like Mike said, within then, how does that seed to the rest? Um, and the reason they cut back these numbers. Was because of this whole concept of the lottery and you can't really, you don't know where they're coming from, which means someone from out of the county could. Get established and then no local business might ever get a foothold in, if we think that's important. But I agree, Mike, I've not seen anything within the state that says you can geographically divide these up.
Right, so that, to me, like, the way they're doing it. Doesn't create a situation the state was trying to avoid because they're allowing more than one anyway. But if we used this reasoning that's not clearly allowed in the statute to set zero city grammar, right? Well, then it does create a situation that they. And and maybe it's okay, maybe it's not, but it's, I don't think we should assume it it would work.
Well, or just even Pharrell and us did theirs, cause I've seen nothing that allow, that says that you can do that, you can have zoning in the sense. Of those other pieces, you know, by a school or whatever, but it doesn't say that you can do this, I mean, did Molly?
Well, how would you even go about getting that information about whether or not it's?
Who can answer this question? No one can answer this question. It's gonna have to be litigated at some point, if there's, and I just think the risk for this being litigated is really small because. They're allowing more than the minimum already.
So you're saying if we go to zero, that there's no.
Or there is, I'm saying there's likely a problem, you want to get out zero.
I don't know, I don't think that's a, I don't make us a standout and creates a problem, I think the whole thing could potentially be a problem, but I don't, I agree with you, I don't think a lot of people would go after. Cause it's not like we said zero, you know, we really wanted to. In general. Okay, well, that's all interesting. I mean, there is that thought of lie low, like you said, for two years and see how things work out.
I kind of feel like that's the direction the county went when they went from two to one. These different zones is, let's ease into this, and with the direction from the state being, nobody gets to say zero. Then, if we did allow one in the city, that's easing into it. And where's the likely location that's gonna go?
Well. Run sun.
Yeah. I mean, the, I mean, the the problem I have with that is it only takes one in town to to really just monopolize if it's the wrong vendor, it's the wrong. Corporation, it's the wrong whatever that owns that place, right, they've got buying power and they've got whatever, they've got. Twenty-five other, you know, municipalities locked up too, right, and that's like, you're never gonna break into that.
That's a lot of information, yeah, last place I've heard on earth out of there.
And now they probably just stay.
Not the way they operated, they would, they'd be out of a license in no time, that that's not what's coming down the pipe now. It's. Yes. This will be way more.
Sanitary, it'll be professional.
That is the whole question, and that's, how do you sit on that, uh, you know, that's why I was like, yeah, we gotta pull these numbers back. I don't know if zero is the right answer either, but, yeah, how many can our city really support that will be profitable? You know, is is one would could go in and basically take care of the. I don't know.
Seems like if we're concerned about competition piece, that we can always increase the number later, let people try.
Happens again with no, no.
Right, well, that's that's ultimately usually good, right?
And we could do that, future of this, we've got one.
If everybody feels strongly that they want to do business with local, then they'll.
Sure, I do a good job, be successful. And then the, well, you can always start a useful.
So what happens if you wanna increase it? Just anybody who goes and applies for licenses, or is that, is everything always thrown into a lot? Well, then, you know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying, but we don't know the answer to that. I don't think the intention was for a ongoing lot.
No, but the whole concept of folks that are getting first crack at this.
Be people who apply. Will be eligible to be in that same.
And that and that might be a value, they wanna continue to serve.
Yeah, cause the limits of the current, re- this is retail. Doesn't even allow you to get to every county.
Yeah, what was that, what was the number?
It's pretty, I forgot, I had it all written down, but I thought, wait a minute, this.
It's like seventy-five percent. Yeah.
Yeah, well, and plus it, I think that was partially the split on the social equity too. I think that's. Of that, you don't have the social, I think.
There was seventy-five, so is it a hundred and fifty then?
Yeah, but there's more counties. Okay, then the number's gotta be less than, cause it wasn't gonna allow us to.
But maybe, again. It's just the startup, the that we don't really know how this is gonna. Here's what we do know, and boy, am I glad we're having this conversation, because some of these bigger questions need to be talked about. But if we want to have any say in what the number is, then we have to pick either. Use the county's ordinance or run your own, and we wanna do that before the end of the year. So, and we can do our own before the end of the year if you want to, so the other question tonight was, if we're gonna do our own, we want to see different. And. Potentially, we wanna see the buffer zone affected. But I'm not sure I heard any other major policy questions in here that you wanted to see different.
I just had one more as. Um, well, actually, there were two more than one questions, so back down, I don't know, I guess that's their page eight. They talk about, I don't know if I understand this one, a conditional or or interim use permit. Within um residential. Like, why, I don't even know if I'd ever want that to be even an option, is my first reaction to that.
We were going to um write our own ordinance.
Yeah, down here.
This whole list of zones is totally different, first of all, I don't know if it need to be included at all. But if we did, it would be, it would just say the places where we allow retail here, and we don't allow retail. The way that the county does, the county zoning ordinance allows. Commercial activities to be done in any of these zones with an interim use, a conditionally used. So anybody can come and ask to do anything in these zones with these permits.
But not in the city.
Not in the city, no, we have a list of, a specific list of things that are allowed conditionally. And this isn't a conditional use in any zone, it's either allowed as permitted principal use or not. Yeah.
Okay, so. I guess for me right now, considering we're thinking of a very minimum amount of licenses. It's something, I never, I just assumed we did our own ordinance. Especially look at how simple their sample form is of what they want to answer. Oh, the other question just below that on advertising. Is, it which isn't a big deal, but um. It's signage, uh, unless otherwise limited by Cook County sign ordinances, don't we have our own sign ordinances?
We do, yeah, yeah.
So we'd have to specify, it just seems like there's certain things we have to reword or they need to include, or it doesn't.
Mike, you kinda animated this before, that these will be covered when they come to do business in our town, because we're gonna.
Retail, yeah, they, I mean, they're, they'll have to apply for a sign permit to put up a sign. And it'll comply with our sign rules or it won't, we don't have to look to this as well. To to have rules about signs.
Yeah, cause they're gonna be, I mean, if we think about it, that they're a business first. So they're gonna have to come get a place, they're gonna have to follow our rules to do that, and then they're doing.
It's just the other side of the outside reading here, I would be somewhat confused.
Well, who's insuring these businesses? Uh, the city can't even get insurance for selling strong. So.
I'm sure this question's answered, because they're.
Who's insuring these people?
These, uh, somebody is. There's there's so much, you know, security involved in the business that the risk might not actually be that high.
Yeah. Pretty tightly.
Yeah.
Well, and the whole cash thing.
You should have been insuring a root for.
Yeah, I was suspected of it. But you just, you know, can't do it to the union cities.
Yet.
Yeah.
Couldn't do, locate C either, right, and have derived variables initially.
I had just one other question, which is, I was sort of curious on page twenty-five. When they talk about a municipal and, you know, retailer. So the county, it it, this reads like the county could do this on their own, so what is the definition of municipal, I always thought that was city.
Counties or municipal.
But that is, okay, thank you. Alright, so they, so why did they ever think they needed us, just because they've thought that he wanted it to be in town?
Probably. Also, I mean, we operate businesses. Yeah. And that was the idea, initially, it's that we thought we could have. Municipal.
Just to join.
And there wasn't any, right, there was no language in the statute originally about whether cities or counties could do this, that was added.
So do we need to talk about this again? We'll be ready to nail this down a little bit.
Can I have a cape more time for not writing it on the words?
I'm done with that, I feel like they already want to do it, I think, rules are gonna. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but anybody who's gonna be coming in to do this is gonna have money. So they're gonna come talk to us about. But we just go ahead and pour down money to do it, and they're gonna say like, okay, so what are the rules, and and we're not listed in here. So they're gonna, they're gonna have to master.
Well, wait a minute, if we say that's our ordinance.
No, no, they, I'm saying in terms of. We won't have that relationship with the business, licensing, registration relationship. We'll just have the typical business city relationship, which means we're gonna send you a utility bill. Do land use permits for you, we're gonna, you know, take care of.
I just mean, then they're still gonna look at this ordinance as a reference document.
Yes.
Is what I was getting at.
Yes.
And it's not going to tell them much about what the city. Has to say, not that that doesn't work aroundable or whatever, but. They're not gonna get, look at this and they're gonna say, oh, I guess I only have to follow the county's sign ordinances. Or the the um buffer zone. Deals or what.
Could offer a few suggested edits to the county's ordinance.
Yeah, cause we could put our, we could put our.
Here's a second additional section that says here are the zones, it's allowed in the city. An additional couple of word changes where it just says county, but it probably also needs to say city.
And then that still gets us back to the big question. Or not, how many?
Wow.
Well, or. Some people are saying maybe nothing right now.
Yeah.
And I know you're wondering if we can.
I mean, I know we of our own accord cannot, so could we have the county's ordinance say none or.
Why the Russian braces?
Equity licenses are gonna be available in theory by the end of November. And if we don't have an ordinance, there's no reason they can't come in and set up shop, and without any amount of number they would like.
That's right, the ordinance sets the limit, without the ordinance, there is no limit. So I could sit down twelve.
Yeah.
And that would be our number.
We can't say no to business, and I don't know that we want to, but I think originally we thought we were going to support. Well, we're not allowed to here, other than.
Well, yeah.
We wanted to be in this business and they love us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we can. Have benefit for.
There's no upside to this thing that they're pushing on us. I mean, just look at states have been living with this for years, like. Alaska has been decimated with social problems since they legalized. Alaska has been decimated with social problems since they legalized.
Yeah, I think for us in this city, I just feel like you can. You know, manage it with adding in our two cents on their ordinance, making sure that that's. And I think that if we. You know, just go with the limit of one, and we know that we can always change it in the future, if things go well, if they don't. And I, and like, we know this is all changing, so.
Yeah, we are gonna probably have to be ready to adapt and change.
Keeping it under wraps. Sure, so solid. As solid as they can be, as solid as possible.
Is there any chance that Connie, you know, like, we never paired up the tobacco because. We were in differences about things like the zoning, like the. Youth nonprofit center with our site, you know, and we weren't gonna switch that, and the company wasn't gonna. So if, if we do that, and they say, oh, no, we're not gonna put any, you know, I mean, can, is that still something distinctive for us? Versus the county saying, well, we don't agree with you on a five hundred foot buffer. Is that different in this instance where? They might all of a sudden say, okay, we're not doing a joint ordinance with you because you won't follow the thousand foot.
Oh, 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 I see.
Know what I mean?
Well, they don't get to decide whether we do a joint ordinance. You get to decide. Whether you use theirs or don't use theirs. You can decide if you wanna register or if you wanna. But you, beyond that, it's just a relationship question, right? If you wanna ask for some changes to it, I'm sure that some of them. Not open to others. And if there's a difference of opinion about the rules, where you want it to be different than what they want it to be, you always have the option to pass your own.
Well, I know, but that's, that's what I'm getting at, is, you know. We'll have to go back now and ask for some of this, and is there a chance then that they could say? Well, no, we're really set on a thousand.
And I would expect them to say that. They decided on a thousand.
And changed it once.
Yeah, so then are we?
I don't have a problem with a thousand feet. I don't, you know, I mean, you're not, I, it's a school. We have so many places. Well, this is one sixth of the line. I guess.
I don't know, I, that, that's one of those things, especially when I look at, we're on a major s- commercial strip right there that's for that purpose.
Yeah. I get that, but the school is a half a block from the highway, a block from the highway.
I know, so I, that's what I'm saying, so I don't know why they should.
You, cuz there's a school there, that's pretty much what you gotta do. Well, there's a lot of other commercial uses that are completely appropriate in that spot, so I don't know that this is a question. Unless we want to change our zoning rules and call this out as its specific use. We could potentially limit the areas where we would allow it. And we always have that authority too. I mean, the, their ordinance is setting some rules, but that we still have our own zoning ordinance. We can say that cannabis business is separate from retail, it's its own use, and we're only gonna allow it in these places.
But that doesn't.
Doesn't help use.
Yeah.
Because we want it to be included.
Yeah.
In there. Just by the thousand foot, not gonna be.
Yeah, that's really where I'm going with this. But maybe no one else sees, sees that as a.
Yeah, and at that point, I mean, if, if, you know, somebody came to the city and said, well, this is what we wanna do, but we can't make it work here. Because of the thousand foot, well, pass our own ordinance.
Or they can just get variants or something, depending. There is a process to vary from this. Well, you gotta draw a circle around it, you know, you can't come within that radius. That's how, that's how you're gonna have to do it. Same with the playground. We're gonna do that same thing with our own, with just whatever number you want it to be.
That's right, yeah. Well, I know it's late in the, in the dance, but I think the responsible thing to, to do is probably, even though it's, it's maybe. A lot of redundant work, but I think it's to have the city's own. And we can decide. How that plays out exactly in the grand ray.
Take the template that they. Let's take a, then, one more, if he says that's a good idea, then we can just butt this in our next conversation and be looking at our draft.
I would like to do that at this point.
One more than you.
We have a draft?
We, no, but we can, this is based on the template. It's done, and you've offered some good feedback to help us guide what the next draft will look like, so, I mean, there's a lot we can grab, it's already here. We'll grab most of this.
The mile ordinance is right here, this is what they use, this is the guide, it's, and then updated, by the way. I just updated that, that, that local government thing today, they redid it.
Oh.
September third, which is since I think the.
Our own ordinance or the county's?
Plus, they have the model form here for registration too. I don't know if that was in there before or not, their registration form and checklist.
What do you think, Chris? Our own ordinance or the county's? Well, I, I mean. But then who does? Always had the attitude, it's kinda nice to. Have, be in control of the things that affect our city, right? Yeah. And sometimes county ordinances or county things don't. Match exactly with the city, so we do things for ourselves to protect ourselves and that kinda thing. I mean, I don't know.
They certainly don't update in real time.
That's what I'm saying, so I'm just thinking, you know. That sounds like our own. Yes, but I didn't understand, I mean, when we're talking about this. We don't have something in play, then somebody could just come in here and open up a bunch of businesses, and we have no say in it. That's true right now, because the county has passed an ordinance. I think right now it was covered by.
No, we haven't signed up, agreed to it. We don't have a joint agreement on it, though.
We don't need a joint agreement.
We do on all our other stuff.
If we don't have one that replaces it, then that's law of the land.
I think if we make no action, then their action's gonna take it back, so.
Oh, I see.
So then in terms of, you know, like.
Oh, wait a minute, Chris is sitting here.
They keep mentioning. Doing all this work, so is that gonna be new?
Well.
What's the question?
If we take no action right now, in the immediate, like, we don't. Officially sign off on the county's ordinance with cannabis. Are we just automatically covered by it because we're listed within it? Is that the right way to say it? Like, you're.
I think that covers it, yeah.
The, the statute's not clear on that. I think the reality is, though. What is the practical, logical extent of that non-action? Something has to happen, something is going to happen. And so the fact that you are not. Doing registration in the city yourselves, and the only ordinance that exists is the county's ordinance. Seems like by default, it's gonna be the county's ordinance that's gonna apply, but the statute doesn't say that.
Okay, well, it's not like we're not gonna take action, but just, yeah, maybe we could get a clarification on that.
And Chris, I've already talked about. Getting a draft worked up for you, so. Don't expect it next meeting, but probably in November, we'll look at a draft. And take enough time to get this done before.
I do agree, leaves us more flexibility about things we might wanna fine tune for us.
Yeah.
You can change it wherever, yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, if we don't, and we adapt this, as time goes on, if we wanna tweak any.
It's, it's really not, uh.
If we're gonna change anything, we gotta go.
Right, right, it is just.
To change something within us.
Maybe.
Age verification.
And maybe they won't.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Alright.
Thank you all very much.
She does.
That's getting, yeah. Next up, public art policy. I realize that it's now eight thirty, let me just. Summarize this a little bit.
Everybody's got the list you're gonna read off of in their emails.
Um.
Stuffing, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I sent a more detailed. Um, Pat, which I can share, send out to everybody too, but I sent it out to Dave. Tierstig and to Craig as the official liaison to the park board. Because you had me be the liaison to the, the C E C all year, I've been attending their meetings. Mike certainly has a longer history than I do, and so does Dave Tierstig in going to these meetings. But um watching all of this, um and there's. They, one of their major goals and became a parent this year in all these meetings is that they need to add some structure. To their board, to their process, to what they do, how they do things. Um, they also need administrative support, which they're about to run out of. They've been able to use some COVID funds. To pay for A R D C to do some administrative work, and that's about to end. And they're also considering some strategic plan. It became a clear. That nobody, they spent a lot of time wondering if we were really, that they had any official sanction from this city and what that role. What their role is, and then it's Craig's been more involved, certainly than I. Park Board, some of the specific project and work that has come through has been examples where we're just don't have enough clarity. To help them do really well in, in the whole process around art. And where it lands and how things move forward. So to help them be successful as they need to do this planning. I thought it was imperative that the city. Finally help them by having some definitions about what we really want from them. Provided we do want them to help us, and what it is we want about art, not talking even about the C E C. We should have an art policy, and if we do wanna work with them, we need to have a formal agreement. And we should help them by having an application form for these kinds of the projects. Just the whole piece to help them move along, so then they clearly know what, if anything, the city wants them to do. Because they have aspirations of being a countywide asset and advisory board. Things beyond what we do. They have mentioned um having, being an advisory to private. Landowners, particularly in the downtown business district. And when you say you're sanctioned by the city, you know, you're the voice of the city, I think then you need to be really clear exactly what your role is. And isn't as the spokesman for the city. Um, and then also, it's kinda like, to me, like, the, um, our. Agreement with the um Arrowhead Animal Rescue, we need pound services, they wanna be a shock. And this organization has probably bigger aspirations, great, good. Than maybe what the city really requires or needs, and I think we need to define that, so that's kind, and just to help them, like I said. Um, have more clarity so they can make decisions, do the strategic planning, whatever they need to do. They're not even a five oh one three C, and that's something they're considering doing too. So that's what this. And I know it's getting late, so I don't know much time you wanna spend discussing it. I'm more than happy to send out that further piece. And I'm also more than happy, if we want to do this, um, to help put together an art po- policy. I looked at a bunch of other cities and, you know, I don't think there's something we have to sit and spend a lot of time on, we can.
No, I think we wanna bring in a simple draft and look at it and talk about it.
Yeah, we, we've got plenty of references to go by. I think the bigger thing is just asking those kinds of quest, you know. What do we really want for them to do? And what do, what do we, what does the city really want around public art, and then what can we do to help with that? I don't know.
Worth mentioning, I think, the motivation I asked fiction was. Public art is something that the city values and that vision includes. It's something that's important to the community, and this group is trying to work on it for us. For, on the benefit of the community, and so the spirit of this conversation is really about what can we do? Uh, to just offer some simple help to that, to support that mission. And, and not to take it over, um, and not necessarily to create a formal board that you're appointing members to. But just to provide some, some guidance, um, this is what would be helpful for us. If you wanna interact with us on these issues, these are the things we'd like you to work on, this is what we like, this is the information. I expect that that will be um received very happily by us. What is they're working with, what's the next phase of their existence?
Yeah, and just some much needed clarity so they can move forward and know where to go, so. Unless you guys wanna have more conversation, I'll bring more details, if that's okay, because I.
Yes.
So we don't spend a lot more time tonight. This, but um, I really think we owe it to them, and in a timely manner, because they do need to get this done by the end of the year. In C. So, um, okay. I'll, I can send out that other thing too, if you wanna read it that I. Don't know, and we had a nice conversation, we did, by the way, we did meet then, Mike set up a meeting. And um Kay Castello came as a park board representative and Dave Tierstig. And that was super helpful, it was great to hear Kay's perspective, and she certainly supported that and saw that as someone who's, you guys just. Done, had more interactions than we have, so I thought that was good. And, and I think Dave gave a couple of key points too. Of, you know, saying what he would recommend, how we move forward too, so that was good. Group, so, okay. Um, that was the last item, and then we're onto council and staff reports, uh, who would like to go first?
I don't know. Oh, Michael. I, I only wanna report on one thing, which is future events, Tracy and I are going to be meeting with. The Chamber of Commerce's new lobbying organization people tomorrow. It's just kind of a meet and greet. Um, hopefully with the idea, though, that we will let them know what we would love the chamber to advocate for. And to me, the top of that list is for sure wastewater treatment plant. That we know we're going to need assistance working with multiple government agencies to fund that. And that the best way to get that assistance. And so the chamber, it certainly will be in their interest as well, and hopefully, the case with them, but that's the top of the list for me. When we're talking to them tomorrow is. Voice water treatment.
I'll bring up the East Bay erosion issues. We had a really good meeting about that today, um. I like to talk to him just a little bit about housing. Um, but I don't know, are there any other topics that you'd like us to bring up? If you just, even awareness, it's not like we need a lot of details, but.
Yeah, this is just introduction more than anything.
Yeah, just so they get a familiarity of what are important things the city has, you know, concerns about. If you wanna wake up in the morning and the light bulb goes off, you can send an email. When do we meet? It's two o'clock. So.
So were they, the lobbying group, where they, they lobbied the state?
Mostly, I think that they will lobby.
Well, you know. In the housing, we had a, had a setback recent, right, a recent setback, and we denied the conditional use or the, the flat, right? And the, the downtown business was pretty vocal about wanting those things to happen. And, and um, and so looking at some of why we looked at it, and so they, third, it was too narrow, we had some infrastructure issues. There's costs, there was neighbors that didn't want assessments, we didn't know what those costs were gonna look like, et cetera, et cetera. Like, I think we need to start taking a good look at public, like, just our infrastructure and expansion of infrastructure. And like, just in general, like, that is, um, how many more projects like that do we want to go away? Um, because we don't, we can't support it, right?
Yeah, thank you, I did have that on, that's good, I just.
This is something that.
Or sources too, cuz we know there are some dollars for that too. Okay.
Not sure we do. Yeah, sure, it's been fairly limited. Sorry to find out.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
I'm, I'm library.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, got it now.
Okay. I can go now?
Yeah, I just thought you were supposed, I was right, right down cuz I thought you were giving me an item.
No.
Got it.
The library, we met and some of the things that came out, we, uh, they installed. Door between, for the staff to have a door between their area and public area. That's good. It's not, it's mostly installed. But then we also voted to complete the uh, their source heat pump project. It had been done partially, and we decided to fully fund that to get it completely done. And the computers are all. Altered, I mean, over the next period of years, uh, thirty five. That's things. Go past their days. Future, more smaller. Staggered. I mean, that's it.
Okay. Great.
Our board event meeting, um. I think with, to the end of October, we had made up some ground as far as. Income based on a slow June. Think we were hovering around a two percent gain, maybe three percent gain over last year. Not counting September. Business, which. I think has been pretty good every weekend.
Been great, yeah.
And October's not too good. No, I'm sorry. I mean, through September, the October business wasn't factored into that, so.
Yeah.
I think we'll.
So Mike, we're behind. Now we're a little bit ahead.
We're a little bit ahead, hoping to get a little bit more. Correct. So I think it's been a good fall. Let's just put it that way, um, and some summer too, so. Um, then we also, the meeting also, um. We discussed uh, rate increases. What about, maybe going forward for twenty twenty five? And we lumped those into. Um, seasonal camping rates, um, marina rates, nightly camping rates. And I think we, we, well, I know we um, voted on a five percent raise for those three categories. For next year, and I believe it was five percent last year too. Uh, we had uh, numbers of either three percent or five percent. There was some discussion of doing three percent or whatever, three point six or whatever. After looking at some of the, the, but then adjusting down, rounding down, so we don't have lot numbers. So whatever it is, if it's twenty five ninety five, it's gonna be twenty five dollars, but there's, everything's being rounded down. But we're going up um, the five percent across the board on that. Um, then we talked about some of the prime seasonal sites, um. Some of those sites, um. Um, as they turn over. From the same people that reserve them every uh, year, or those are gonna be pushed into a nightly. Type adjustment, because that's what we need to do. We need to get down to the uh. Percentage is that eighty percent? Twenty percent of our sites have to be.
And you're at thirty now.
Yeah, we're at thirty, so we gotta look at doing that. And two things that will solve, it'll make us available to apply for that money. And also, the nightly rates will actually be better income for the park, you know, in those prime sites. This is about here. I want a golf report. I think they had a good fall. Uh, I think. October, when's he locked in that? Twenty first, eighteenth or twentieth, the golden lines, I think.
Yeah, it's coming up soon. It's coming up soon, yeah.
But it's been dry. So anyway, we'll see if this increase, uh, it's always interesting to look at. If we do five percent, how did we end the year? Well, we're at three percent, but maybe right now, might hit that five maybe to the end of this month. Yeah, it's hard to say. Maybe not, but probably at least we'll be up a little bit, um, even though we had a wet June. That's good. For the park and the city. Um, but we're also concerned too, you know, like I'm concerned, everybody else on the board is concerned about, okay, what do our rates fit? How do we fit with other places? And then you also, you also have to have a thing in your mind that, hey, this is. The harbor in Grammeray. We are unique. We're a primo destination. Um, not that we have to be. Really, really super high price over everybody, but we are a little bit high priced over other people, but yet we're offering. Hmm, the people, and you, you know, we seem to have. Very good occupancy, not losing that. Um, so I think price wise, I don't think we're. Um, you know, in a position where we're losing people because of price.
I thought Dave Lewis checked that too.
Yeah, he checks that, cuz you know, when he comes with this, that's kinda like the first question. Everybody's asking, well, okay, we're getting so much a night for ten. What's the forestry do? What's the Fed's doing? What is the state doing? What's the? Two harbors, and we got Silver Bay now, and they're adding on and doing things, and they're coming up with better ways to. Do their uh, their camping situations, but you know, we have a destination site that's pretty good. You know, with the boat launch now that we have, it's new, and with uh, IDAC. Launch that we have down there, those types of things we've added to it. So there's a few other things that kinda make it more. That's all I got.
Nope, just uh, H R, and we didn't have planning in zone.
Not much Arrowhead Animal Rescue meeting is tomorrow. Free board is either the twenty fourth, twenty fifth. They're trying to find one that works.
Hear about, you get, will you hear about the inventory or something? Or is that too early to hear about that?
I expect we'll, we'll hear some kind of update, but.
At least an update on the public process that they did last time.
I think, Mike, you already sent out an email to everybody for the October twenty fourth, um. Legislative luncheon and the fall gala. Did everyone get that?
I'm not, I did myself, and I just. I did talk to one today, and she's hoping that. Do that soon.
Yeah, yesterday, so.
Okay, so we are, it, it'd be great. Are you going to both? The luncheon and the gala, or the gala? All right, uh, are other people interested or able to go to one or other?
Lunch and that's more.
That's the legislative, where you're releasing the legislators. The dinner is more of a celebration than anything, and, and some awards to local businesses, you know. It's really, I, I think a great event to sit down with. People you know, and then also for every, all these businesses to. Well, recognition for all the hard work, or just sit down and say, yeah, another year. So, it's, it's nice. Um, I, I think she's. We have had to sit through some longer legislative commentary in the past, but I think they've gotten them to that. It's not become part of the initial pre- presentation. It is an opportunity to, you know, get up. And more about our, you know, celebrating our businesses, cuz it is a chamber event. Okay, and then at some point, if enough people wanna go, it needs to be posted, right? So just make sure Mike knows.
Lunch and.
Um, eleven thirty.
It's early, okay.
Yeah, eleven thirty at the harbor later up yonder, and then five o'clock at Portage. For the fall gala. So between registration and letting Mike or Patrick, whoever know. Um, we talked about the lobby group. The other piece, um. I wanted to do quick tonight is our November twenty seventh meeting, of course, is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And then December twenty fifth would be our last meeting on Christmas Day for the year. So I'd like to see what we wanna do to change dates for those, which direction, depending on people's holiday plans. Like Thanksgiving, would Tuesday night be okay before for people?
Tuesday, twenty sixth of November.
Oh, cuz it's from the weekend, you mean? Like getting ready? Oh, all right.
Or what about Wednesday? Does twenty seventh work for people?
Not for me.
No. Did maybe make it a minimum?
On the twenty sixth?
If it works for other people to do, it's not super easy.
No, I'm gonna be busy, honestly, not even about wearing masks.
Keep agenda lighter.
Well, I mean. October, um. I'm gonna get to December. Oh, I see Saturday already, then you're at the end of the month, or at least we can't even push it out a week.
Yeah, in December, I'd recommend the eleventh regular meeting and then the eighteenth for meeting in the year.
Sorry.
No.
We're not doing December eighteenth. Sorry. I actually might be on a timer. Um, okay. Like me?
I think it'd be you for the day.
Um.
That's true, on the eighteen.
Got all those mayor for day proverges.
That's right.
Well-trained kids. Well, now that will for sure be a light agenda.
No, is that the, that's the budget one?
Well, that's the one where we're passing the final budget.
Right.
Eleventh is the one where we're inviting the public to come and talk to you, but.
Is there?
Taxation.
Yeah, is that? You don't need a time difference between that, the two dates, right?
I think the week is appropriate, is adequate. You just can't do it the same meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure. Um.
Yeah, week is good.
If that's what you guys.
Or, I mean, it could be.
About Thursday? About Thursday, the nineteenth.
I can adjust for you all.
Well, we know we're not doing.
You could, you could come to the wire.
Afterwards, you're gonna be gonna eat too, right? You leave town after.
Well, actually, that's true. I don't need to be there either. So you can pick her birthday, she can skip, or you can pick Thursday, I'll skip.
Take a date.
And then if something comes up where I need to be there.
We only need three.
I, I would pick the eighteen. Yeah. So, eleventh and eighteen.
And eighteenth, well.
And then what about November? We did. A decision.
November would be the. Thirteenth and uh.
Well, do you wanna do? We're gonna have a cannabis thing. What else might, I don't know what, you might have some H R stuff, right?
I, I mean, I think you're gonna wanna keep two meetings.
Oh, right. I just wonder like how close together, so.
Is this for the first or second one?
The second one.
We don't want Monday. Was Tuesday a no-go? The twenty sixth?
I was just. It was a thumbs down over here.
Um, could we do like we did in December and move to this week?
Well, so I'm, well.
Go to the twentieth.
Do we have enough time? Wait a minute, that's. Yeah, do we have enough time? Cuz the first meeting will be the thirteenth. And that's why I didn't wanna.
I think it'll be hard to turn around a lot.
Okay.
Items.
Well, then I'm going to propose the, the twenty sixth then.
Is there a different time of day that would work with?
What, what time is that? Six thirty, same time.
Yeah, do you want a different time? Yeah.
Used to be four thirty, you know? That's a little, that's a little.
And then we've got the other date, okay.
Four thirty.
All right, um. Yeah, only thing, well, we did the East Bay erosion meeting today with Mike and Stephen John C. and Alina. I guess the most important part of that meeting, which I thought was a pretty good one, cuz we finally got Mike Keyport in the room. Of course, he's all about FEMA, and we talked about potentially being able to put the FEMA. Finances available to marry with what we're trying to do with Army Corps of Engineers to get a. Assessment done, which is gonna be a little pricey. And so we're, now we're all together in the same room, and we could potentially get a lot of this covered cost-wise. Cuz it is really essential that we really assess where the harbor is at.
Yeah.
What the landscape is.
Talking about all the way around, or you're talking just?
East.
East Bay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And uh, so the, the actual under the water kinda thing, the wave action, the whole deal. This is the real essential core part to beginning this before they can even design any solutions presenting. And I think our solutions could be really different than what we even think about right now.
Yeah, we just have no idea.
What it, but I think this is time, everyone's agreeing with this, is time well spent and money well spent. To kinda just assess what causes all this and where it's headed. Um, so that we can move to those next steps, beginning Mike Keyport in the room and why he offers through FEMA. And is that the, I said that at a really high level.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Um, was a big score, and I think we saw a path forward to getting, hopefully be able to get the Army Corps of Engineers to. Eventually get to work on that, that part of it. And the only other piece I won't take time off, I can just send something through Patrick, is that time capsule. I brought up a list of some potential items we might wanna have in there, and then I stopped and talked to John today, so I have a size. Of the box, so I'll just email that out, just so people. Cuz I'm really happy to go out and kind of get things, but maybe you guys have ideas what you want in there. Um. That's it. I just uh, also would love to know what's the final, we need more trimming done on that wonderful big. And landscaping work. Thanks, everyone. Thank you. We are adjourned, by the way.